We're going to start our Village Board of Trustees meeting Monday, December 2nd, 2024, at 7:30 PM. We'll call participants. Trustee Albert, present. Deputy Mayor Corrigan, present. Trustee Ho, present. Trustee Osborne, present. And Mayor Curly is present. Upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, January 6th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. And we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, February 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion for approval of December 4th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting, please? Meeting minutes, please. Motion?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Can I have a second?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. Go on, favor. Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing, which we are really going to, we're going to keep it, we're going to keep it going. We're not going to just do it tonight. I have a planner actually looking at it, and this had to do with cars and cars' covers and things of that nature. Because what's been going on, we've been changing laws as time goes on. People are trying to, you're allowed one, every homeowner or resident is allowed one commercial vehicle parked behind a certain thing in their house. Well, it's coming, and people are starting to run businesses at their house, which is not legal in Suffolk with multiple taxis, okay? And other vehicles, too. And we don't, and it's not allowed in Suffolk. So people are trying to skirt the law by putting covers on cars and different things like that, and that's not the intention, that was not the spirit of the law. So we are adjusting our laws to, you know, adjust with the times. So that, and that's where we're at there. So if somebody wants to, you know, in reference to it, if somebody...
Make a motion to open.
I'm going to open. Yeah. So I'm going to have, at this point, I'm going to have a motion to open the public hearing. Motion, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So at this point, what I'm going to do, I'm just going to open it, and then we're going to, if somebody wants to say something now, but we're going to have it next week, too. We have more facts on this issue. On this issue with car, with car covers. We're going to have public participation a little later. This is just for this issue on this. So at this point, I'm going to motion to continue, to continue this for our next meeting, which will be on January 6th, 2025. Can I have a motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by Trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point, at this point, I have a resolution. Avon Place, it's a street, it's actually a private street, where Avon is, where Regeneron, you know, bought the street. Regeneron had asked us, they had contacted me and this and that, and I looked, did some looking into it, and I talked to our historian, and that street was actually called Division Street way back when. So based on the fact, it's his original name, a private street, we're going to go back and it's going to be called Division Street. So they asked us to do that, so we're doing it for Regeneron. They, as you know, they bought that property, they're in there doing some, they got a demolition permit, and they're looking to move ahead. So at this point, could I, can I have a motion to change the name of Avon Place to Division Street, please? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fire Department, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. I just had a quick update. Firstly, the Proposition 2 regarding the low-sap increase passed at referendum. I just wanted to thank you for your unwavering support with all this, and the Village residents as well for supporting us. Pre-construction for the new aeroscope will be underway December 8th through December 10th. So the committee will be attending the Seagrave Factory in Wisconsin and basically go over the spec and ensure that the apparatus is going to be built and constructed as it's outlined, and they just kind of kick off the whole process. So I just wanted to update you on that as well.
What month is that?
December. Did I not say it?
No, you did.
I did, okay.
No, December's going to be cold.
It's next Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday.
Cold.
Yes. Lastly, Sandra will be visiting Suffolk on the fire truck on the 21st of December as well. In case you hear any sirens, it's us. As far as new membership, I'd like to ask the mayor and the Village Board to accept Miguel Munoz Perez as a new member of the volunteer host company number one.
I have a motion accepting Miguel Munoz Perez as a new member in volunteer host company number, number one, with the approval of the Village Attorney. Motion, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Second, please.
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Ho. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And also, I'd like to ask the mayor and the Village Board to accept Renell Rosine as a new member of the volunteer host company number one as well.
I have a motion accepting Renell Rosine as a new member of volunteer host company with approval of the Village Attorney, please. Motion, please.
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry I scared you.
No, it's hard to hear.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your late-night calls. Thank you for your morning calls. Thank you for protecting the residents.
You're welcome.
Police Department, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. In the month of November, the Police Department responded to 857 calls for service. I just have one agenda item for the consideration of the board tonight. As the board's aware, the Police Department receives several annual grants throughout the year to focus on different areas of enforcement. This year, we've been selected by Rockland County through their Stop DWI program to receive $7,000 in grant funding to be used for Stop DWI, impaired driving by drugs and alcohol, and various other things. This grant funding helps us put additional patrols on the road for combating those particular types of problems. So I would just ask, in order to receive that funding, that the board pass a resolution accepting that funding from the county of Rockland.
I please have a motion, please, accepting the $7,000 for County Rockland Stop DWI to be utilized for DWI patrols. Motion, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Second, please.
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much. Culture and Recreation, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. A few things that we have coming up. This is a very busy weekend. Friday, December 6th, we have the tree lighting at the Zeta at 6:00 PM. The second high school choir will be performing there for the tree lighting. Saturday, December 7th, the holiday parade will begin at 6:30, and it will be going up Lafayette Avenue. Thursday, December 26th, the memorial lighting will be outside here in Village Hall at 6:30 PM. So I noticed that there are some high school volunteers. If anyone's looking for community hours this Saturday, we could use some help. So if you want to email me, my email is cmoes@soffronmy.gov, so we see if we can get some volunteers. Good opportunity.
Make sure they know, go up to them, give it to them, because they didn't hear it, I could tell. I got you, man. I got you covered. On your team. You and me.
And I think that's it.
All right. That's good. We've got exciting weekend, folks coming up, the tree lighting, then we have the holiday parade, which is the best by far anywhere around here, and then we have our memorial lighting a little bit later on December 26th. So it's all, it's all good stuff. We love the public to come, so thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kat. Okay. At this point, I'll have the motion open up a public comment. You're allowed to talk for three seconds each. No, no, no. A motion open the public comment, and you can talk as long as you want. Motion over top. Can I have a motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee, all in favor? Aye. Please, if anyone would like to speak, come on up. Yeah, you go right there, that way we can hear you.
Hello. Okay, I'm from Riverside, and my neighbor's from Riverside. We're neighbors.
Just say your name, so we have it for the record.
Oh, okay. I'm Wendy Frankel.
Right.
Margaret Gashia.
Mary Kay.
Okay, and we're 19 and 17, and we have a situation, I don't know who or what is living across the street at 22, but it doesn't seem to be a residential living. There is parking on the wrong side of the street, there is parking on the lawn, there is unbelievable flashing of strobe lights for over an hour at a time. The light beams into my house, sometimes at 1:00 in the morning, I have light coming through from them that flashes right into my house. If you ever pass a car, and they open the door, you can feel the ground shaking from the sound of the music. It's become untenable since the time they got there. It's no longer a place, if I had a place to go, I'd leave in a minute, because it's unlivable, untenable. I don't believe they're actually living as a residence. I believe it's a business. They're, they're taxi cab cars with, with the emblems on the car. They're constantly in the way, they block my both driveways. I can't get in, I can't get out. I call the police, I have to wait. Cars are there parked all night long. I couldn't back my car up in my driveway a few days ago, because I had strobe lights in my face, so I couldn't, I had to wait till they left. The car, I understand, but with her camera, was flashing for an hour, over an hour. I came home at 4:15 today, there was a car parked across the street. I backed my car into my driveway, got on the phone while I was in the car and said, "There's a car again." I said, "Like, it's me again, like, there's a car there again. Like, how many, don't they get it? What don't they get?" I can't stand it. I think it needs to be looked into. They have a management company taking care of their rent. They told us to call them if there's a problem. I called, no room on their answering machine, and they don't answer. I called the owner in Florida, nobody picks up the phone. It's not a living situation. I don't know what's going on there, I don't know who's living in there, there's too many people, it's a intact house like mine. You are only entitled to have, according to the Village, which I was told, seven people on the first level and seven people on the middle level. 14 people in that whole house, that's it. And I don't know how many people, but we've constantly seen a lot of people, and no children. It seems like it's a business going on, and it needs to be looked into, and we don't need that, because it was very peaceful until they came along, and I can't stand it anymore. I can't stand having to wait to get out of the driveway, I can't stand to have to call the police all the time. It's like I'm becoming a nuisance to the Police Department, and I can't have this, but I can't have them there either, the way they're interrupting and getting in my life. It's not acceptable. It's really not acceptable. I mean, I live there, and I can't come, I can't, I come out of my driveway, I have to pull across the other side of the road to back out, to be able to turn, to get out. And if I want to go left to 59, if it's there, I can't get there. I have a right to go right or left out of my driveway. I'm supposed to have that right. But when they park half my driveway, I got news to you, if they have a car parked across the street, and I have an animal emergency or something, a pet of mine gets sick, if I got to tail out to a hospital 2:00 in the morning, and I have someone there, I'll go right through that car, if to save the life of my pet. I mean, I need to be able to get in and out of my driveway as I please. There is no parking on the other side. I have been there for years. We don't park across the side, on the other side. We park in our driveways. And they have an ample driveway for six cars and one slot on the grounds, and they've been parking on the ground, too, on the grass. What are we living in? I mean, what's going on? I don't get it. Why are they allowed to get away with it? Who are they?
No, finish your comments, and she can finish your comments, and I'll address you, and I have talked to you, just to put on the record, I have talked to you in my office before, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And I, and I, please go ahead, and then I'll...
Okay, I do agree with everything she says.
I've never spoken with you, that I...
No. No, I try to, I try to stay quiet.
No, that's okay. Listen, I invited her to come, as she has concerned.
I talked to her about, a lot about it, I've talked to the building inspector about it, who actually said that that street should be no parking completely, because it's simply not wide enough. There was a car, one morning, I worked from home, and I looked out, and there was a car there that night, at 5:30 at night, I let it go, the next morning, the car was still parked there on the wrong side of the street. So now the school buses had to come down and do a S to get through, and I had called the police station that morning, and nobody came, and they got them to move. So the old school buses were coming, S-ing through it. So that was, that was the only time I called. What I can say going forward, with the house that Kate Georgie is building across the street since her house burned, she's now going to be a legal two-family, there's going to be a lot more cars coming in and out of those driveways. I'd like to have the non-parking pushed down a little bit past Wendy, because there's already been cars hit in front of my house, because of the cars backing out of Kate's house, and there's just, there's just simply not enough room. And now she's going to have rentals on both sides, there's going to be a lot more cars. So my motion would be to push it down, at least to...
A couple more people.
Yeah, well, it could go to the end, but at least a couple more houses down, because I actually have a picture on my phone, too, where the people in 22 parked right in front of the no parking sign, and it was there all night. And I guess there was no patrol came by, saw it, or just let it go, it was parked there all night. And it's frustrating, but I'm not the type of person, I don't want to call the Police Department, I know they're busy, I don't want to call them for all those little things.
Well, I would tell you, please keep calling the Police Department. You're not bothering the Police Department, okay? We need you as a board to do that. Call them as many times if you see someone's breaking the law as necessary, but as I've explained to you, Ms. Frankel, we have issued violations on that property already. Once, once those violations are issued, this board's hands are tied, as far as it's up to the court system. I cannot interfere, and nor will I interfere with the court system, and they will continue to issue violations. They did not find overcrowding, as you claim. 14 people, as you say, I don't know how many were there, they did not find overcrowding when they went there, okay? Correct, they be, yes, there's always different things that happen, okay? Will they continue on? Yes. The code enforcers have been there numerous times, and they have issued violations, they are doing their job, but if you don't, please don't, you know, call the police, call the police, call the police. Could they not have come one time? Yeah, because maybe they had a heart attack, maybe they had a burglary going, maybe there are other things going on, okay? So I can't, I'm not going to say, because they didn't come, that the police are not doing their job, because you said, yeah, there's a car parked on the other side of the road, and they may have had other things, okay? We are, we are a village police department with so many offices, so many things, and we do prioritize, okay? But that's why I say, keep calling, keep calling, okay? And I advise you, before you leave, talk to the chief of police, he's right back there, he's very approachable, okay? And let him know. But departments, departments have done their job, they have given, issued violations there, and now it's up to, and that's why you see me earlier talking about, I'm looking for, to change other laws also, to change laws such as taxis, how people, like, I even talked about it before you guys even talked. So we recognize there, this board talks about it, and we recognize there are different situations that are, that are going on, and things are changing, and we must adjust with those change, because there are some people who try to, not everyone, it's very few out there, who always try to beat the system, and that goes with everything in life. People try to, some people try to beat the system, and some just don't even know what it is either. So then, when we hear about it, then we go out. Our code enforcers are constantly going out, streets right around you, the bridge street, I can go on, you know, different streets, there's things going on every single day. With, with change comes new understandings and new ways to operate, and that goes for police work, that goes for firework, that goes for everything, okay? When I was a fireman, back when I was a fireman, things even like windows, they changed quality of windows, "Oh, we're going to make these windows so your heat stays in better." Well, they made it more dangerous for firemen, because now the, now the heat couldn't get out when there was a fire. So there's many different changes that go on, but we're here to help, please keep calling up the Police Department, please do me a favor, talk to the chief before you leave tonight, too, okay? And you know what, and let him give, let him give more, his personal attention there, but cops have been on that road since I was a kid, okay? I came here when I was about 11 years, about 11 years old, about when I, about 20 years ago. I, I, that road was a problem then, going in and out and up and weave. That, that road is always, when you bought your house, that road was a problem, okay? With the traffic, okay?
It still is. That's the problem, the owner didn't find ample parking, and if there isn't, that's your problem to find parking.
But the Village of Suffolk allows street parking, we do allow street, not on that side, I agree with you, but the Village does allow, and if we go ahead and try to take away street, we actually discussed taking away street, between December, taking away street parking, there wouldn't be enough parking for the people who live there. We'd have to, like, there's certain, see, things change. Like, there was a time where then, where your neighbor just had two people living there, three people living there, okay? But years ago, like, I'll give you a neighbor, Lonnie can drive Squires Gate, every house had five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 people, you know? Then it went down, the parents left, the kids grew up, this, then it went on to a people. Well, now it's coming back, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 people, but it's legal. Rooms are based on square footage, okay? On how many are allowed in those rooms.
Where it's illegal.
No, when it's not, that's why we, that's why there are violations presently on that property. There are presently violations on that property. They are doing your job, and I need you to keep calling the police, don't feel like a nuisance. If it bothers you, that's the best I can...
All I say, it's, it's me.
But that's, but that's, listen, however you want to get on the phone and say it, just say, "How you doing? I just want to report this, it's there, okay? Can you please..." And, and, you know, don't think they've never come, because they have. Now, if they didn't come at a certain time because of, because of other things going on, well, then, you know what, that's, I, I can't, I can't say to someone, "You're not doing your job," because they do, they do do priorities. And you know what, as again, talk to the chief before you leave, please, okay? And just talk, and that's it. But we, but there are violations, and we appreciate your concerns, and we will address your concerns, and we thank you for coming here, and we, and we do, and we do, you know, we respect you for doing it. That's why we have these public sessions.
I mean, it can't be normal for someone to leave strobe lights on for an hour facing a house.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure about that, but I'm going to guess that's not illegal. I'm going to, it might not be comfortable, but I'm going to guess it's not illegal, but I'll look into it for you.
You're normally, though, when you get in your car, you get out, and shut your lights off.
You're normal, and someone else's normal is different. The word "normal" got so wide in America, I don't know what "normal" is anymore.
People would get in their car, turn the lights on, and go, and then they come home, they shut the car off, and they don't go automatically, you shut the lights off.
But that, but that doesn't mean it's illegal, with all respect to Ms. Frankel. It doesn't mean it, that's what you're used to, it doesn't mean it's illegal. Does that make sense? Like, in other words, you don't like it, but it doesn't mean it's illegal.
No, it disrupts my sleep.
Well, that's a different story. Correct.
It's going into my head, right into my head.
I know, but I, I don't, but you know, I, no, I'm going to look into it, I'm going to let the code, I'm going to let the Police Department look into it, but my initial instinct is, I don't think it's, because I remember there's another situation, I think up by your neighborhood, Clark, right? Where someone kept, had their car, and it's going across, but we looked into it, it wasn't illegal. So it, there's, there's, that's the problem, there are people that are different. Now, I don't know if you know them, we can just say to them, I can even have the code enforcers say something to them, you know, specifically what it is, and maybe they'll, they'll do it for that reason, just...
To have anything to do with them, none whatsoever. They're like quietly, very quietly on that street.
Right.
My neighbor, I know one or two people, and I've been there for 40 years, so I don't need to know or introduce myself to anybody.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'm like, I'm not interested in everybody else's life. I'm not...
All right, and maybe they're not interested in yours, Wendy.
I don't care, it's interesting to me. I'm not, I don't need them to be a part of my life.
Right.
You know, that's...
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, that's good.
I don't bother anybody else.
That's good. All right, thank you very much, lady.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
All right. You guys from Suffolk High School want to come up and talk about my hair or anything? You want to come up and say anything? No? You want to come and say who you like in school? I don't care. Whatever you want to say, come on up. No? Nothing? Well, good? Okay, thank you. How about over here, young lady? Want to say anything? No? Okay. Nobody knows my name. I'm Mayor Curly, okay? Most famous mayor in the county, don't forget that, okay? So, all right, thank you very much. Dean, there's no other speakers at this point. I'd like to have a motion to close the public comment period.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Ho.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. See, I, see, they were talking about the word "normal." What's good about the word "normal" is, for years, everybody said it was abnormal, but it grew so much, now people think I'm normal, so I'm kind of happy about it, guys, you know what I mean? I did all seven years at Suffolk High School, it was great. 11th, I did 11th twice, and I did 9th twice. Damn, it's not... I started getting good at basketball, too. I was better than the other kids by the end.
You're missing a year.
See, I, see, they were talking about the word normal. What's good about the word normal is for years, everybody said it was abnormal, but it grew so much, now people think I'm normal. So I'm kind of happy about it, guys, you know what I mean? I did all seven years at Suffolk High School, it was great. 11, I did 11 twice, and I did nine twice. I started getting good at basketball, too. I was better than the other kids by the end.
You missed a year.
Yeah, that's why I did seven years. Wasn't good at math. At this point, Department of Public Works, Charles, please.
Item A, resolution authorizing change order number one to DS Meyer Enterprises LLC for the roadway improvements Phase 14 project in the amount of $115,026.19.
That, that was for part of our paving projects, and, so that's, we had, we had the money there, just do that. So a motion to authorize change order number one to DS Meyer Enterprises, please. Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item B, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the original contract with JCO Incorporated. This amendment will be with H2O Innovation, who acquired JCO Inc., extending the term of the contract to and including September 30th, 2026.
Okay, JCO was purchased by H2O, so, so that, that's, it's, you know, it's same company, but they, we just use them in our sewer plant for some professional services down there. So I can have a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the contract with JCO slash Inc. slash H2O, extending the term of contract to and including September 30th, 2026. Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Charles. Treasurer, please.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, board. Glad you had a nice Thanksgiving. There's two resolutions I need to adopt by the board tonight. The first one is to transfer $10,000 from the contingency account to fund the Ed Fagan Drive project. We received $140,000 from the Community Development Block Grant through Fred, and we need to fund $10,000, and that'll leave a balance of $231,000.
That's how we share the $10,000. Ed Fagan Drive is the field going down to the ball field, which we got a grant for, okay? Off of Ramapo Avenue there, it's Ed Fagan Drive. I got a motion to transfer funds to contingent account to Ed Fagan Drive Repaving Capital Project. Motion, please?
Motion trustee.
Motion made by trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the second resolution is to just establish the capital project for the Memorial Drive Rehab, Rehabilitation Project. We received some money from FEMA, but this is just to establish the project until we know we're getting the total amount from the state.
Right. We got a motion establishing a problem for 2025, that 005 Memorial Drive Rehabilitation. This is from, old flooding from, from FEMA. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion trustee.
Motion made by trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Ho. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anyone in, any need for executive session here?
Nope. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
No, no need for that. Okay, trustees have anything to say?
I just want to thank you for the appointment, mayor. I look forward for another wonderful year on this board where we get a lot of great things done, and we talk a lot, and we make sure that we're all educated and know what we need to know to keep this village running, and I think you're doing a fantastic job, and I thank you for being mayor, and it's a pleasure and an honor to be your deputy mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you all, thank you to the whole board, okay?
Yes, yes.
I don't, I don't have much to say here. We do have, we do have, again, we talked about the parade, we talk about the, the Christmas tree hiding, we talked about the, the Hanukkah event, and I'd also like to mention that the veterans, the veterans in this country are in, are in tough straits. There's veterans, unfortunately, like, twenty a day are committing suicide every day. There are a lot of homeless, there are a lot of homeless people in general, but there's a lot of homeless veterans. So the Village of Suffolk is going to put, on December 15th, we're going to put a breakfast together at the community center, and it's actually going to be free of charge, donations accepted if you have it, okay? And I know all these gentlemen here, these guys want to volunteer and help me that day, I see it in them already, they're excited. They didn't know it, but they are, okay? And anyone else that wants to. But we're doing this to raise money and raise awareness, and any funds raised will go to those, to the homeless veterans and to the suicide hotlines for veterans, all right? Now, don't put just veterans ahead, I put all homeless ahead of all different ways, all right? But, but sometimes the human mind, we lose track of the human mind, and I find unfortunately sometimes veterans have, that can happen to them more. So, you know, we're looking for help volunteers, and it's going to be a great breakfast, we're going to have former Mayor Dagan La Court as, you know, one of the, one of the host there, former, former Mayor Markounis as a, as a waiter. If you see these people, let them know I volunteered them. Former Mayor Kagan making pancakes, again, if anyone sees him, let them know he's making pancakes. I initiated them on my own, haven't talked them about it, so, but that's okay, it's America, they learn through social media, it's a good way to learn things. But we thought it was important, we've been, you know, planning this for a little while, and, and we, you know, whoever, you know, the board of trustees, or, you know, you know, going to do what they can, whether it's before the event or the day of the event, helping us, depending on, you know, what, whatever his access is, so, that's kind of, that's, we have a lot of good things coming up, you know, feel free, feel free to come to, to all these events, and that's, that's all I have to say. I want to thank Mr. Marks for wanting, wanting to care about getting involved in this community, and, and I think that you'll be a good plus, and they'll, I'm sure these other members will help you. So at this point, can I have a motion to close this meeting, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, folks, very much.